Y'all are all four point five.
Five point five.
I do know that. So we need to... Okay. Something... I'm towards it.
I'm gonna turn this out.
It's from where?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Step on.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I don't wanna step on water. (laughing).
This is pretty much... Yeah. My heart is in the mission.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
I just get you and kill us in our back. First I say hi. You appreciate some of them.
How would you?
Yeah, fine.
This one's... They better mitigate that. They're gonna...
I'm sorry.
I can't make sure. I see you all. Is that a problem?
I mean...
Good one. See now? In great place. We see the time.
(laughing).
It's not here. We have to... Go on.
It's dark.
Yeah.
Man, they're bad. And then you remember... This is what...
Yes. Speak up.
Tell me your parents. What do you think about... While you think about... When you speak and act like... I might need to... I might need to... Now you're an old fellow. You're just kind of the... Okay, that's my... That's terrible. I have presents. That's what I think. It's like a new court. They have everybody there. And you go, this is... And you're not a microphone. I go, you don't want me at the microphone. My votes carry.
Do you have to do... Eighteen votes?
No, I used to do it. I... When I was in California, I was in court. Four days out of the... And, um, and that would be... Even morning and afternoon. And then in between trials and all that other stuff. So, I mean, I was nonstop. I had five... So, and I was the only attorney. I'm just for... You ever visit this... This is how we do it. Um, but now...
I can do it now.
Now I just... Now I just... Oh, I know. It's just kind of thing. And nothing ever gets progressed. I need to go back. Who's still in... Was that bringing a doctor from the other country? I need to very... Sir, can I press my daughter? Do what you said. It's called a racial man. And I have... I stay on completely. Six, seven hours. So, it would take like four or five minutes. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, that was crazy. It is. Now, four, four, you know? Yeah. Well, no, well... No, I'm sorry. I left it on four, but I'm gonna pack it up. Like a... Hey. I just want to guess. Don't want to guess. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I thought I knew all this stuff. Actually, I assumed that the dog... You got it all.
What? Yeah, really, that's down.
She has that thought. It's funny. I always been telling him that. I think it's the smartest thought. That's my smartest. And he's right. He's...
Oh, really?
Yeah. He's like...
And you... You were there for... Some... That's not... I'm kind of... That's something we should also...
Now we're calling him.
That you have a driver's license? Yeah, so I may walk.
Yes. Of course.
All right. Welcome, ladies, to the meeting. Back there. Called with any order and... Please leave this to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to start?
Right finger.
Mayor, Council, Ms. Mathews, Ms. Whitehead, Ms. Thompson. I wanted to thank you guys for your service. Have always seen eye to eye. But it's tough to do what you do. It's very difficult. And, and it's appreciative. It's needed more in society, a hundred percent. More people need to get involved. And, and as tough as it's been, thank you very, very, very much. And I appreciate it. Um, and like I said, I haven't always got along. But I do respect what you do. And I do respect the position that you serve. And, and, um, and I wish you guys the best of luck across the border. And I'm not gonna turn around and disrespect you guys. I'm gonna turn my back to you. But to the people elected, you guys are gonna be bombarded with everybody's bells and whistles and wishes. You guys ran on a platform. And you ran with ideas and a vision for the city. Please remember that vision. And please do due diligence in following through with that for what's in the best interest of all of Godly. And always keep your ears open. And always listen to everybody involved. And do everything you can out here in the open for all of Godly to see as much as is legally acceptable. Thank you.
That's all. And Kelly, did you want to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all, ma'am.
Okay. First item is to conduct the candidates of the election.
Uh, Mayor, uh, all of the council should have before you the official results from the May 6, 2023 election as they have been received by the county election board. Um, the board met, um, today, actually, um, to, uh, vote and to verify any provisional ballots and any overseas ballots that may have been received. Um, the document that you have that shows Ms.... Ms. Borges? Ms. Borges' seal is the final tally after all of the provisional ballots, overseas ballots, early voting ballots, um, and the, um, oh, the votes that were taken on the actual election day. So, uh, the results of those votes, um, I will go ahead and read them out loud. You all have to, you know, just for the purpose of the, um, the public here. Uh, Michael Shonikko received, um, a hundred and eighty-two total votes cast. Roger Cornellson received a hundred and eighty-four total votes cast. Jessica Greer received seventy-nine total votes cast. Misty Rodriguez received two hundred and thirty total votes cast. Grace White, uh, received seventy-four total votes cast. Carney Eldridge received seventy-six total votes cast. Scott Yarborough received three hundred and twenty total votes cast... Votes cast. Uh, total votes cast. Um, David Williams received two hundred and twenty total votes cast. David Ham received a hundred and twenty-one total votes cast. And Jan Whitehead received a hundred and twenty-six total votes cast. Um, there were four city council positions opened at this election. And they are at large, not for specifics, uh, positions. And so therefore, the four individuals that, um, would be filling this position per the information from the county would be Roger Cornellson, Misty Rodriguez, Scott Yarborough, and David Williams.
All right. Need a copy of the resolution?
Um, for purposes of the election code, um, this resolution would serve as the tally of those votes since the, uh, since the county uses a electronic system. You essentially can rely on the sealed information, um, sealed being the information provided by the county as to the votes cast. Um, and then, um, this resolution would serve as a tabulation of the council. Uh, once that is done... Once that is done, the mayor, as the presiding officer for the council, um, would sign the documents, basically verifying that this resolution serves as a tabulation. The mayor is then, uh, required to provide the certificate of election to each of the candidates who have won. Um, and, and the city secretary has provided that. Um, the city will keep that on record. And then the city secretary would need to swear in each of the candidates, um, who are newly elected candidates. Swear in, meaning they have to take their oath of office. There's also an anti-barrberry statement that's required.
Okay. Do we have a number for this resolution? Resolution number? Maybe that?
There'll be a time member, um, after the meeting.
Okay.
I did all of the council members receive a copy of the resolution without the information, um, I've been... You have that bid too. Um, Ms. Price will correct Mr. Yarborough's spelling on that resolution. Um, his name is spelled with one T. So Spock will be correcting.
We also need to correct Jessica Greer's early votes cast to sixty-seven. It shows sixty-six. And David Williams' early votes cast shows seventy-four. It should be one seventy-four.
I didn't have fill in the number of the names. So after the council meeting, I will confirm with the documentation all the numbers are correct. So you said Jessica Greer's listed early cast votes as sixty-six. It should be sixty-seven?
Yes, and then David Williams shows seventy-four. It should be one seventy-four.
I will verify and confirm all of those numbers with the information provided by the county to make sure they're all valid and accurate before this is... And then Mr. Yarborough's first name will also be correct.
All right.
Just for your identification, Council, there were, um, on the information provided by the county, which was actually provided today. Um, first of all, the reason why the meeting had to be held today, the law requires that the, um, candidates saying of the election occur in these circumstances between, uh, on a later date of three days after the election or after the county board has voted to verify all of the, um, overseas votes and any provisional votes. Um, the county didn't vote until today. Uh, or the county board didn't need until today. So because you, uh, by law, the city can't canvass the votes until the latter of the two. Today is the first day that the votes can be canvassed, which is why this meeting is being held today. Um, just for your identification, there were a total number of five hundred and thirty-four votes, um, cast in this election.
So do we need motion to pass this resolution? Just a little?
Um, you need a motion to pass the resolution of the city council of the city of Godly declaring the results of the general election of the city of Godly held May 6, 2023, um, for the purpose of electing four city council members. And should you wish to make the motion, um, it would need a second and then it's already been taken. Uh, the law also specifies a quorum of two people is needed for this meeting. And for that reason, only two people need to vote and be a part of the question.
I make a motion to adopt this resolution of the city council of the city of Godly challenging county to declare the results of the general election of the city of Godly held May 6, 2023 for the purpose of electing four city council members and providing effective date.
Well, this is... What else second that motion?
And we only need two votes.
Well, you should, since the motion was made in the second, you would call them.
All in favor? Most carries?
Do we have all of them here? Or go... Mr. Cornellson will need to be sworn under oath. Even though he's an incumbent, he needs to be sworn under oath again, uh, take the oath of office, and then also sign the bribery statement as well. And they still need to issue the certificate of election. So, so if you want to continue by issuing the certificate of election to these, um, I guess, do you want... It can be done in a way where you issue the certificate of election and then, um, they be sworn under oath. Kathleen, under law, is the person who is swearing all of the incoming members.
Want me to hand these out? Do you have them?
Are they signed?
You said he might be like...
Are they signed soon?
Not yet.
And then Kathleen does need to make a copy for the city. The original goes to the individual, but the city needs to retain it. That's normal for a role? It's required by law, ma'am. What happens if you never got one? Required by law.
Is this yours?
Yeah. The presiding officer for the canvassing body would be the council, the city council elections. Um, after the, uh, election and the candidates then issues the certificate of election to each of the candidates who've won. And that's basically saying you are the city council member now. Um, they're technically don't take their office until they're sworn under oath.
Okay, do I need to get everyone up there now?
You might want to do it individually. If you have all this signed, we need to sit... I know the city seals on top. Do you have a stamp on the city seal?
Yes.
Okay. If you can place the city stamp, um, on the bottom left of the mayor's signature, make a copy of all of those for your records. And then those originals will go to you.
Okay. Do you need to do that now?
Yes, please. Thank you. And I think after that point, then you can call each, um, each individual up first. You can present them with a certificate of election. And then, um, Kathleen can, um, administer the oath. Um, the oath of office and the statement of the officer, which is the anti-barrberry statement that's required, um, although the form is a form provided by the secretary of state, um, those forms aren't required to be provided to the secretary of state. The law says that the city, um, is to keep those on. While she's doing that, I'm gonna verify on this difference that we can come on the... On the resolution. While she's doing that, I'm going to verify that we've got on the reservation. Do you need to present them to the? Yes, if you want to call them up individually, so I can present them. And if you want to do the oath of office, get them this out of this container. And then we also need the city seal for all of those filings up here, do you want? And the original statement, if any of them need copying.
David Williams?
And Miss Williams, follow your chief, please, and then I will read them into your right hand, or PSW. I state a name.
Aye, David Williams.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Councilmember for the city of Godly, Texas.
Councilmember for the city of Godly, Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So how we go?
You'll need to sign this maybe. And we also have the oath of office. Do you need special, like, for everybody else?
Sure. Sure.
Next, for the statement. I state a name.
Aye, David Williams.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Promised to pay.
Promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute.
Or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
For the giving or withholding.
For the giving or withholding.
Of a vote.
Of a vote.
At the election.
At the election.
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward.
Or as a reward.
To secure my appointment.
To secure my appointment.
Or confirmation.
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be. So how we go?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Scott Yarborough?
After we're done with this, we also need a signed candidacy of the general election. And it's been signed since the.
Your right hand, repeat after me. I state a name.
Aye, Scott Yarborough.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly paid.
Or indirectly paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Promised to pay.
Promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute.
Or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
For the giving or withholding.
For the giving or withholding.
Of a vote.
Of a vote.
At the election.
At the election.
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward to secure my appointment.
Or as a reward to secure my appointment.
Or confirmation.
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be. So help me God.
Next, we will do the oath of office.
I state a name.
Aye, Scott Yarborough.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
City council member of the city of Godly, Texas.
Councilmember for the city of Godly, Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States. So how we go?
Technically, you don't have to do the statement until you take the oath, then it becomes a council. Doesn't it?
Misty Rodriguez?
I state a name.
I'm Misty Rodriguez.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly paid.
Or indirectly paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Promised to pay.
Promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute.
Or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
For the giving or withholding.
For the giving or withholding.
Of a vote.
Of a vote.
At the election.
At the election.
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward to secure my appointment.
Or as a reward to secure my appointment.
Or confirmation.
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be. So help me God.
Next, we can do the oath of office.
I state a name.
I state a name.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Councilmember for the city of Godly.
Councilmember for the city of Godly.
Texas.
Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So how we go?
Does that make any difference? Does anyone have a warrant for somebody tested that anybody done from this place?
Roger, I didn't work really.
So he's actually filling his own seat, so technically until he is sworn under oath or gives his oath of office and signs the anti-bribery statement, he's a holdover candidate. So he holds his own office until he does that. He does not need to take his oath of office or do the anti-bribery statement at a meeting. So it needs to be communicated to, I was hoping Kathleen's not here, but it needs to be communicated, and I'll tell Kathleen after the meeting as well. It needs to be communicated to him that he needs to come and meet with Kathleen. She's able to give him the oath of office and that as well. Mayor, I did have one item of community interest to discuss with the council and the public today, if I may. Items of community interest aren't required to be posted, I'll be able to apply by law. The city has contracted with a company named Mosaic to perform the review for the Godly Comprehensive Plan. The Godly Comprehensive Plan addresses basically where it's a document that serves as guidance for zoning issues with the city. It also serves as a document that is to reflect where the city sees its future in terms of residential, retail, and commercial development, as well as roadway thoroughfare planning, something that was discussed at the last meeting, park planning, and basically planning the development of the city in the future. I spoke with Carissa Cox today. She is one of the owners of Mosaic. The city, or Ms. Cox, and Mosaic is holding virtual meetings. They are holding virtual. They are holding virtual meetings on, from 5:30 to 7 o'clock on every Wednesday during the month of May. I believe there have been several meetings already. Those meetings are virtual, so they are all online. The next one is next Wednesday, and that is to discuss ETJ, or extraterritorial jurisdiction. That's any areas within a half mile of the city's city limits, to discuss ETJ issues. If any member of the public wants to attend those meetings, they, it is a Zoom meeting, and they can sign up to receive the Zoom link on godlyplan.com. A link to godlyplan.com is also on the city's website. It's my understanding that members of the council have attended this meeting. Ms. Cox wanted me to reiterate with the council members and those incoming council members, and I wanted to reiterate as well. If there is a quorum of council members at this meeting, meaning three or even less than a quorum of council members at this virtual meeting, it is considered a meeting under the open meeting fact. And if any meeting of less than a quorum or quorum of council members discussing city business and the comp plan being city business, would require the posting of that meeting 72 hours in advance. Ms. Cox asked that I address that with the council, that at this point in the comp plan process, at this point, Ms. Cox and Mosaic are getting input from the community. So stakeholders being the property owners and the citizens of the city. She's asking that council members not attend those actual virtual hearings. And if you do attend, that you not participate in the discussion for the reason being that then it becomes a meeting. We are going to post it as a potential forum, but she did ask that I advise you all to not attend. If you wish to see what was discussed at the meeting, she is going to be providing me a link to the recordings of the meeting. She's actually recording each Zoom call, and that can be provided to the council members afterwards. The city council and all individuals on the city council will be able to put in their input on the comprehensive plan. Once the comprehensive plan is presented, that will come forward to you from Mosaic in Kinley Moore. They'll present the comp plan based on their findings that they've gotten from their community meetings and everything. And then they will present it to you all, at which point you will have the chance to talk to them and give your input on each aspect of the comprehensive plan. So she asked that I do address that with you, given the open meetings issues. Once there's a meeting, we're required to provide notice to the public of any deliberations or any action. An action can't be taken at the virtual hearing. No deliberations are supposed to happen, and for that reason, like I said, I'm advising the council and the future council members as well. If you do attend, you are not to discuss or make any comments as to the content. I would ask that you not attend. Again, if you need a copy of that actual meeting, Ms. Cox said she can provide that. If you do attend, I ask that you not make any comments. And I would encourage all the citizens, if you do have input on how you want the city to be developed, that you attend those meetings every Wednesday. It's a virtual meeting, again, you can call in if you don't have internet access. And that link information, again, is on godlyplan.com.
So I noticed that the agenda for Tuesday is not posted?
We're going to be posting agendas out there.
Okay.
There's no further business on the screen.
It looks like we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Thanks, all.